Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular La Sour City Council meeting scheduled for November 14, 2022. At this time, I will call the meeting in order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where whose hands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Council members, you've all presented your packets either Thursday or Friday. You've had the weekend to review them. You have the opportunity to address any questions you may have. Also, at this time, I will entertain a motion for approving tonight's agenda. There is an addition that was put in front of you before we started the meeting regarding candidate selection.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the addition.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe. Second by Councilmember Schlier. Any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to presentations, tonight we are going to hear from the MMPA, the Avon Energy Presentation. It's by Mr. Dave Niles. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Pleasure to have you here tonight, Dave.
Yes.
The floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time this evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is David Niles. I'm with Avon Energy. We manage the Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. And I've been working with Avon MMPA for over 20 years. And what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to give you the presentation we delivered at our 2022 Annual Meeting up in Anoka back in July. I realize that's getting a few months past that now, but we've been doing these presentations in front of city councils for about the last two or three months now. And then the ultimate sort of thing that MMPA has asked me, and then I'll get to in the conclusion, is an extension of the power sales agreement that each of the member cities have with MMPA. So I'll talk more about that when I get there. So tonight, I'd like to just review MMPA's mission, talk about who we are, share a little bit of our history, look at what we've done, because we were planning on celebrating, having a big 25th anniversary celebration in 2020, and then something happened. And then talk about our plans for the future, and the contract extension being an important part of that. So MMPA's mission is to provide power that's reliable and that's competitively priced. And those are the two pillars I'm going to talk about throughout this presentation, writing reliable power, competitively priced power, and to create value for MMPA and its members. So MMPA has 12 member communities serving about 164,000 Minnesotans. You can see they're here. They're sort of clustered in sort of those third-tier suburbs and then heading out mostly to the south and west. We got East Grant Forks up there on the North Dakota border as well. So to review the history, MMPA was founded in 1992. They were eight former Excel Energy customers. La Sour was one of the eight founding members of MMPA. We're very grateful for that. The agency began operating in 1995. Then about nine years later, we had East Grant Forks and Shakopee join as new members. The following year, Buffalo joined. In 2013, our newest member, Elk River, joined. And as I mentioned, in 2020, we were celebrating 25 years of success of operations of serving reliable, competitively priced power to our members. And this graph shows how we've grown, and we've grown in two ways. The first is what I mentioned loud on the last slide was addition of members. But also, our members have been growing organically as well, communities expanding, adding housing, adding new business and residential, business and industrial customers coming in. And so when we started out at less than 300,000 megawatt hours that first year, and we're now almost up to 2 million megawatt hours. We're 2 billion kilowatt hours. So the agency's been growing, strong growth. Our competitive benchmark is Excel Energy. They're the sort of the largest utility in Minnesota. They have service territory adjoining nearly all of our member communities. This graph goes back almost all the way to the beginning, and what it shows is that at the beginning, our rates were well below Excel, then they were about the same for a while. There was a period of about two years in 2007 and 2008 when our rates were higher than Excel. And since then, from 2009 to the present, our rates have been lower than Excel, and in fact, that gap has been widening somewhat. And so again, part of the mission, competitively priced power. So I want to take you on a little bit of a journey of MMPA's capacity and energy portfolio since the agency was founded. So when we were founded in 1995, all of our contracts, all of our resources were, first of all, they were contracts. They weren't things the agency owned, and they were all coal at the beginning. So in 1995, we had about 125 megawatts of coal purchases from other utilities, slices of their power plants. 2000, we began adding some hydropower, which you can see has kept with us over the years. 2005 is when natural gas started entering our portfolio with the first two power plants we built. And I'll talk about those in a little bit, with a little bit of market purchases in there. And then the most recent sort of change in our portfolio has been the addition of renewables, starting in 2015. And then you can see adding quite a bit between then and 2020. And in fact, with the wind farm that's about to come online in the next month here, that amount's going to grow even more into 2023, as you see there. Energy side looks fairly similar, but also some important differences. So even though, you know, we obviously have enough capacity to meet our peak needs, and that goes back to the reliability side of our mission, we buy a lot of our energy from the market because it's often cost-effective or cost-competitive to do so. And so the purple, if you want to call it, represents market purchases. You can see that gas has been growing, that orange at the bottom, coal phasing out. And again, renewables really increasing, 2015 and 2020. And then this, this wind farm that we're going to add next month is going to produce about 20% of our total energy needs just by itself. So again, I'm going to talk about our power supply, and it falls along those lines of reliability and competitive pricing. So our conventional resources, that's our natural gas-fired resources, are really geared towards reliability. And that includes the Minnesota River Station, the Fairway Energy Park, and Shakopee Energy Park. And then our renewable resources, some of which we own and some of which are contracts with other parties, are about controlling price and keeping prices competitive. And that includes our Oakland Wind Farm, Hometown Bioenergy, Black Oakland Farm, Buffalo Solar, and then the Wali Wind, which is coming online again next month. So just take you through some pictures, and then what I want to show you in this, both is how these assets perform in our portfolio. But also, this is what La Sour and the other 11 members of MMPA have built as a portfolio of resources to serve you and your community in providing that reliable, competitively priced power. And these are, your ratepayers have paid the funds that have helped us assemble this portfolio of resources in the last quarter century, and I think it's pretty impressive. Minnesota River Station, 49-megawatt gas turbine. It's a peaking plant, meaning it's only intended to run on the very hottest days of the year or the very coldest days occasionally. It's owned by Chaska, which is one of our member communities, but leased to MMPA until 2031. And we have an option to extend that lease all the way up through 2051, and we expect to do that. We're actually putting a new combustion chamber into that generator in the spring. Fairway Energy Park is the sort of the crown jewel of our portfolio. It's the largest solely owned by municipal power plant in the state of Minnesota. It's 300-megawatt combined-cycle dual-fuel plant. It's fast-starting, which is good, which means when the grid needs it, we can come on quickly. It's got high availability, which means when we push the button, it turns on. It doesn't have much maintenance issues. And it's the center of the agency's energy education program. And I want to pause here in talking about the resources to talk about that energy education program. So for 10 years now, we've been running a fourth-grade program. And we both bring kids to Fairway Energy Park. We bus them from the member communities in. And we also do in-school assemblies for communities that are too far away to bus in and out in a day. And in that decade now, we've had 20,000 students participate in this program. We teach them about energy efficiency. We teach them about how electricity is generated and work delivered to your home through the transmission and distribution system, talk some about renewable energy. Right before the pandemic, we expanded this program to a high school program as well, our Shakopee Energy Park program. And there we go more in depth. We have sort of some case studies on power generation and electric circuits. It's geared towards 10th and 11th graders. And we also do a career panel, which is really interesting. We bring in both people from our office at Avon that manage an MMPA, but we also bring in folks from the community. So your utility director, maybe a line worker, a customer service person would come to this career panel. And we tell kids there's great paths along the four-year college degree program, but there's also really rewarding careers in energy and in the electric industry specifically that are on a different route, on a trade school route. And I think that teachers and students like hearing that there's a variety of options and paths. And so it's been really a very, very interesting program. As I mentioned, that program's housed at Shakopee Energy Park, which is our newest conventional resource. It's a 46-megawatt natural gas fuel facility, uses liquefied natural gas as a backup fuel, and won the Power Magazine 2017 Plant of the Year Award. In fact, most of our plants I've shown you have won awards. They're just sort of old at this point, so we didn't put them on here. We have a history of building award-winning, really nice-looking, I think, power plants, many of which are located in our member communities. Our first renewable plant was Oakland Wind Farm, a 44-megawatt wind farm in Blooming Prairie, Minnesota. Next is someone you're probably a little more familiar with, the Hometown Bioenergy here in town, an 8-megawatt biogas project in La Sour. Anaerobic digestion, you know, takes agricultural byproducts and waste products, runs them through those two green digesters, creates biogas, which is stored in those white bubbles or gas containers, and then run through four 2-megawatt engines to produce renewable energy. What's different and innovative about this is that it's dispatchable renewable energy. So unlike solar, which you only get when the sun shines, or wind, when you only get when the wind blows, because of the gas storage, we have dispatchable renewable energy. So it helps both with the reliability and the cost control. We also have the 78-megawatt wind farm up in Sauk Center in Stearns County. Buffalo Solar, Buffalo's another MMPA member community, a 7-megawatt solar facility north of town. And then our newest, which I've mentioned a couple times here, is our Wali Wind Farm. That's in Rock County in very southwestern Minnesota, 110-megawatt wind farm that's under construction and is going to be in service here by the end of this year. And this was at the groundbreaking earlier this year. That's myself and two of our board members having a hot day in June, where the winter rooms are getting ready to be built. So I'll move on now and talk about financial results, because again, having a very, we operate very conservatively on a financial basis with a focus on rates and rates being competitive. So I'm going to use the last six years as my period of review here. MMPA's had strong net income over the last six years. Net income's been in excess of $10 million in each of those years, and in some years, well in excess of that. That strong net income in turn has produced healthy cash position. So we've had a cash balance in excess of $35 million in each year. And these is as of the end of each year. You can see it's gone up and then it's come down. And the reason, for example, from 2019 to 2020 that it came down is we've used some of that cash to reduce debt. So at the end of 2016, that was the last time we issued bonds to build the Shakopee plant I was telling you about. We had about $320 million of debt outstanding at the end of that year. Through our normal bond retirements, as well as some early payments went on call dates, we've reduced debt in that five-year period by $140 million, down to about $180 million. And the benefit of that is that it means that the fixed cost stream of MMPA out into the future is lower, which means that almost being equal rates can be lower because we don't have that income drag, or sorry, interest payment drag on our cash flows. And we've done all of that while maintaining rates below our competitive benchmark of Excel Energy. And so you can see, and this one even has 2022 year-to-date, which at that time was halfway through the year, even during a period of rising energy costs with natural gas prices, gasoline, you see at the pump, rising. Unlike 2007, 2008, the last time where I said that was the two years we went above Excel, that was the last time the gas prices went really high for more than, you know, a couple days at a time. And because of that portfolio of resources, so a lot of those resources I showed you, we brought online since 2007, 2008, we're in a very different position and have been able to maintain and even expand that competitive advantage this time around. And that's, I think, something we should all celebrate. So I'm going to move to talking about sort of more of the current business environment we're in. So we've been in a period of, after many years of natural gas prices being low. So after that 2007, 2008 spike, prices came down. And you can see sort of as we were coming into 2020, even before the pandemic, spot gas prices were about $2 an MMBtu. And even into the pandemic, it didn't affect them that much. And that big spike, which is so high, it goes off the graph, that was Winter Storm Yuri in February of 2021, when prices went high and there were blackouts for a week in Texas here in Minnesota. We kept the lights on. We were very proud of that. But since then, and so prices came back down, but started to move up and then have really moved up into 2022. Some of that is the war in Ukraine. U.S. is now exporting a lot of liquefied natural gas. It's a world market now, not just a domestic market, and the demand in Europe has skyrocketed. And so we're exporting a lot more of that, putting upward pressure on prices. So this is, again, this is the presentation that we gave in July. Prices actually went up even further after this, but have actually come down some in the last month or so, which has been good. We're also in a period of high inflation. So, you know, from when the agency was founded in 1995 and through the end of 2020, we had one year where inflation was over 4%, just barely. We were usually in that 2% to 4%, even 1% to 4% range. But, you know, at the time this was printed, it was 9.1%. I think the most recent news that came out last week was 7.7%. So we're in a period of inflation that's outside what we've seen during the whole lifetime of MMPA. And then interest rates have been moving up as well. So this goes back to beginning of 2017. The blue is one-year Treasury, red's 10-year Treasury, green is 30-year Treasury. What we saw is that we had a period where short-term interest rates went up, but long-term interest rates are sort of staying the same. Then you can see when the pandemic hit, that's when interest rates crashed. And then it was really, again, not until earlier this year, when rates started moving up. And in fact, they're higher now than they were. We're up over 4% now on the one-year Treasury as of today. So both rates overall have sort of come back to those pre-pandemic levels and even moved up above them a little bit. And short-term interest rates, actually, the one-year Treasury rate right now is above the 30-year Treasury rate, which is, you know, so-called inverted yield curve. But I think it's important to know that when you put this in a much longer historical context, the last 45 years or so, we're still in relatively low interest rate times, even though they're higher than what they've been used to be seen for the last five, 10 years. Some economic contractions. So this was GDP growth quarter by quarter. So we had a nice, strong recovery coming out of the sort of the worst of the pandemic in 2021, a number of quarters of growth and stronger growth than we've seen. But in the first quarter of 2021, we had 1.6% GDP contraction. Second quarter was 6/10 of a percent contraction. We'll get the third quarter numbers out soon. But, you know, that has an effect on how much electricity people buy, both residential, but especially in the business, the commercial and industrial sector. Tight labor markets. Again, the time this was printed, unemployment was 3.6%. I think it's 3.7 now. 11.3 million job openings against only 5.9 million unemployed people. So almost a 2:1 ratio of job openings to unemployed people. And we're obviously seeing that all across the economy, lots of help-wanted signs, lots of things that used to not take very long, taking longer to happen. And that affects you guys as employers and as well as people in your communities looking to employ people. So what is MMPA's plan for the future, given this business environment? We want to add large-scale solar. We have built a lot of renewable resources. You've seen it's, I'd say, somewhat wind-heavy on the renewable side right now. That's the sort of more mature technology at this point. Solar is still a newer technology, but it's now maturing such that we think it's the long-term solution for MMPA. That large-scale solar would be transmission interconnected. But then we also want to add smaller-scale solar near our member communities, contributes both to reliability and price control. We want to continue to operate our three conventional resources, our three natural gas resources of Minnesota River Station, Fairway Energy Park, and Shakopee Energy Park. But we want to pivot somewhat to pursue fueling them with at least a part of their fuel supply coming from renewable natural gas. And I know Andrew and Derek were here six months ago or so, talking to you guys about what we're doing at Hometown Bioenergy there. And so that's this next slide here, is that we were looking to produce renewable natural gas at Hometown Bioenergy. So we'll clean up that biogas right now that's being produced to pipeline-quality gas. And we then have the option of either selling it into renewable natural gas markets, because right now, with markets where they are, the value of that natural gas is more valuable to be sold into RNG markets, that's renewable natural gas, than it is to be used at the facility to be converted into electricity. But we have that flexibility there, which is optionality is always good. So we have the ability to inject that renewable natural gas, sell it, or use the natural gas storage system to inject it from here and use it at our conventional resources. And then we're also looking at developing more RNG facilities as well with some partners in the metro area. So again, we're here to talk about member contract extension. So most of our member contracts run to 2050. You are one of the two communities where it runs to 2040. But having most of our members out to 2050, that limits our debt term to 28 years, because each of our members' contracts with the agency, their obligation to buy all of your power needs from MMPA is the security that MMPA has to go issue bonds into the tax-exempt debt market. And so obviously, 2050 minus 2022 equals 28. And so what we're looking for is extending contracts to 2060. That provides MMPA the flexibility to sell 30-year debt, just like most of us choose 30-year mortgages because it's the most cost-effective. Having been able to issue 30-year debt is part of our plan to keep MMPA's rates competitive. And in fact, that's, again, that's why we want that flexibility to keep MMPA's member rates competitive. And I will just, oh, I can't, there we go. Just as a point of fact, as I mentioned, I've been doing a lot of these presentations over the last few months. Nine of the 12 MMPA members have now extended those contracts to 2060, and we hope that you will consider doing so as well. So this is the last slide. To summarize, you know, as I've talked about tonight, we've had a quarter century of success in terms of the growth we've had, the portfolio of resources we've developed, and how our rates have beaten our competitive benchmark almost every single year we've been in existence. As we head into next year with that Wali Wind Farm coming online, we're going to be 42% renewable. We think that's a good balance of the reliability and the cost control. So again, one of the benefits of renewable energy, not just the environmental benefit, but the economic benefit. So when natural gas prices have gone to nearly $10 an MMBtu, if you've got, you know, either a fixed-price contract with a third party to buy solar or wind, or you own solar and wind where the variable cost is zero, we don't have that same risk exposure to the extent that our energy is coming from renewable resources, because it's not subject to that fossil fuel price risk that you saw in that graph where gas prices were going up and down. Our rates have been below our competitive benchmark, as I said. I've outlined our approach for future power supply, which is to add some solar and some renewable natural gas and to maintain our conventional fleet of resources as well. We expect to continue to have competitive rates, and we believe that extending those, the member contracts, will help us as one more tool, the toolbox, to help us keep rates competitive. So with that, I thank you very much for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Niles. I appreciate it. I'm going to ask you, Councilmember Crowe, if you have any questions or comments for the council. I know this is kind of up your alley in expertise.
Well, David, let's go back and just cover a couple of things. Number one, talk about how MMPA is governed. Avon is our management. Let you mention the differences between Avon and how we govern. I think this is really critical.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, there's 12 MMPA members. Each member has a board member. So one of the things that, unlike some of the other power agencies in the state, MMPA has sort of philosophically taken the approach of every member gets to see at the table and a voice of the vote. So each member gets to appoint a board member and an alternate, and things get voted on by the board. And then Avon Energy, who I work for, we were the management for MMPA. So we work under long-term contracts, managing the agency. We actually were consultants that did the studies that led to the formation of MMPA back in the late 80s and early 90s. And we sort of transitioned from consultants more to management. And I think that that, you know, that distinction between, you know, the board governs and sets policy, adopts the budget, makes the investment resource decisions, what we're going to do for next power plants. And the board takes those governing actions and policy actions, and management manages. And I think that that relationship has been a real factor in MMPA's success over the past quarter century.
David, let me simply make a comment as a board member for the last almost six years now, I guess. I am deeply impressed by that system, both by the fact that the member communities are the ones making the policy and big, big-level decisions. But Avon does an absolutely amazing job of managing for us. You can just imagine the technological things that are involved in all of this, and they've got a good handle on it, better than good. They're superior at doing it. David, let me ask you a couple other questions real quickly, so people understand. I think when, we'll call ourselves laypeople. We look at something like this, and we go, wow, look at those cash reserves. You gave us a rationalization. But why in the world do we need that kind of cash reserves or cash balance, to be a better term? I think it's important because we don't deal at this level, even in those millions of dollars. But we do in the energy sector, so go ahead.
Yeah, I'd say it's a couple of things. One, it's about volatility. So you saw some of those graphs on gas prices. Electric prices have been doing the same thing at the wholesale level. You need to have a good, healthy reserves to absorb those swings in costs, because when we get a bill from the wholesale entity, we have to pay it a week later. We don't, you guys only pay once a month. So there's actually a good bit of working capital there. The other thing is MMPA also has a $28 million rate stabilization fund. And so that is a portion of those funds, of that cash balance is set aside in that rate stabilization fund. We built it up from about 2009 until about 2016, 2017. We had never touched it until I mentioned that Winter Storm Yuri. In February of 2021, I think our budgeted energy costs were about $4.5 million. An actual payment is something like $9 million. A lot of utilities, including many in Minnesota, and I'm not knocking us, but a lot of utilities sort of said, well, our costs are a lot higher. We're going to pay the bill now, but we're going to charge customers over maybe two or three years to recoup that. At MMPA, we said, you know, that's what our rate stabilization fund was there for, is for these very short-term, unexpected, high-price events. And so instead of having a big spike in rates when that happened, MMPA said, we'll draw down our rate stabilization fund for $4.5 million to cover that. And so having cash balances on hand allows that. The other thing I would say is that you can sort of see, our investments are infrequent, but when they happen, they're big. And so we are building cash towards our next asset use for MMPA. Because, you know, we intend to use debt markets. Someone had talked about how we've issued debt when we when we build new generation, but we're also trying to move to a balance sheet that's more balanced between debt and equity as we're a more mature organization now. The utility industry has historically been fairly debt-heavy, but we like to have, we'd like to have the cash to give us the flexibility on that investing in future generation resources as well. So I'd say it's all three of those things.
Finally, let me just ask you to recover something. There's a lot there, and I think this requires that we hear it again. One of the two areas that we try to go with are reliability and competitive pricing. Talk about how renewables play into that and how that gives us security as a community.
Yes. So, you know, the conventional resources are, you know, focused on the reliability side. You know, you know that you can push the button, turn on the generator, use, generate the electricity. On the renewable side, it's about cost control. So again, all of MMPA's assets, we have fully transitioned out of coal. So all of our fossil fuel resources are now natural gas. Again, natural gas prices, when fracking came in in the early teens, you know, kept gas prices low for a long time. We did really well. You can see that in the rate history. But as I showed you in the other graph, gas prices have been more volatile recently. And the benefit of having a significant portion of our resources coming from renewable energy is that those resources are fixed-price contracts, meaning we pay the same price whether gas is at $2 or the gas is at $10. And we also own some of those. So Hometown Bioenergy, Oakland Wind Farm, you know, we own those facilities. And so our variable cost of production, when the wind blows, and essence for those is zero, our investment of those was upfront. And so they're not subject to the same commodity price risk. And so having a balance, again, it is a balance, like I said earlier. But not having all of our eggs in one basket, if you will, of natural gas, by having those renewable resources in the portfolio helps us be less exposed to that volatility of commodity price risk and fossil fuel price risk.
Which obviously translates to our community keeping rates as low as we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything further. Joe may have a comment. We're not going to address this this evening, by the way. We want to simply give the council, how can you hear your presentation? But Joe, if I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I would just piggyback on what Councilmember Crowe had mentioned. And David had asked me, will you prepare the presentation? And David had asked me when he prepared the presentation and sent it my way, asked if council will be considering an extension of the current power contract this evening. And I said no. That, Congressman Proctor, and I spoke about this previously, that we thought would be beneficial to council to hear the presentation, get an update from MMPA as this council looks forward to future years developing its budget and long-term planning for electric services and its existing electric territory. This is something that we will bring forward to council for reviewing consideration in the near future, however anticipated, but not this evening. So I think this is a great kickstart to that conversation from the council.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. David, thank you very much for coming this evening. At least we held the snow off. We had it only earlier in the day for you. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again for your time.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I was just going to say, if you have any more questions, as you consider the contract extension, please, Joe knows how to get ahold of me, so we'd be happy to answer those so you can make informed decisions. Thank you.
And we will in the second future very soon. So, thank you, Mr. Mayors.
Thank you.
Council members, moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine. They've been made available in the city council. These two days in advance, we all items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member, citizens, or request which event it will be removed from the agenda and considered in the normal sequence. At this time, I will ask that our city administrator, Mr. Roby, if you want to review these for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city needs consent agenda through several items. The first is approval of city council minutes from the October 24th, 2022 regular council meeting. Item B, approved first minutes through today, November 14th, included our four purchases over $25,000. The first being to MMPA and Avant Energy for October 2022 purchase power, totaling $618,603.74. Second item is to Maggie Construction, payment application number 14 for the well number eight, Wellhouse Project, $297,503.30. And three, payments landmark structures, payment application number 14, the composite elevator water tower, $62,795. And finally, to the Minnesota Department of Revenue for the city's October 2022 sales tax, for $44,700. And then C, on the consent agenda tonight is approval of the payment application to landmark structures for the composite elevator water tower. And D, approving a payment application number 14 to Maggie Construction for well eight, Wellhouse. And E, approval of the Main Street closure request for Christmas in the Valley. And M, approve the parade permit for Christmas in the Valley. And I G, two personnel actions. One is the hiring of an electric line person. And number two, promotion to permanent full-time status for police officer. And both of those items. Item one, electric line person is to fill an existing opening for electric line person vacated when Lucas Crone left us earlier this fall. And item two, Dimitri, he's been with us as a temporary full-time officer, being a current officer. And with the resignation of Officer Mike Thel, Dimitri would be rolling into a permanent full-time status with this item.
Very good. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about these consent agenda? If not, consider motion, so move. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, my county member Williams. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to public comment. I don't believe we have anybody signed up tonight, so we'll move into the city administrator's update. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items tonight. Last week, so one of the goals, city council goals, found a list of goals for the last couple of years now, is emergency preparedness and update the emergency operations plan. Building officials, only administrator, Justin Nielsen, who also serves as the city's emergency manager. And I have been meeting since the summer, discussing plans and how we can continue that process and get something in front of the council as soon as possible. And last week, November 10th, staff, including Mr. Nielsen, Chief Tiki, our communications director, Stacy Lawrence, and I attended a NIMs training to discuss incident command, which is hosted by South Central Healthcare Coalition. I started Tiki backing on their exercises because they invite us to things. It's no cost to the city. They've been hosting these sessions throughout their region, and they hosted an event, train session last week at Richview here in town. They will be hosting some events throughout the next 12 months, including more more in-depth training courses on incident command itself for those who would likely serve as incident commander. And will continue to join in wherever they'll invite us, and it's no cost to us. So it was a great training session hosted by Mr. Eric Weller. We, I want to thank all the election judges and staff for a successful election day. The items, item AF on the regular agenda tonight will be the formal canvassing of the results, but we had a very successful election day last Tuesday. Really high train, with really strong interest in the election. A lot of folks in the door, and we just had solid staff support and outstanding election judges to lead us through the day. We even had a dedicated challenger at the event. He was with us from 6:45 in the morning until we left at just after 10 o'clock Tuesday night, and he sat through and watched the whole thing, and we were good friends by the end of the day. We, the housing study request for proposal was posted today to the leaders of some cities and sent out to a number individual consultants looking for a comprehensive housing study. The EDA approved these the issuance of that RFP at its last meeting. That RFP has a completion deadline of January 6th, so I just think over the next six, seven weeks, I will be receiving some proposals for comprehensive housing studies. We're very excited about that. Justin Nielsen led the service staff liaison to the planning commission. I don't want to sit here under Councilman Proctor. You're going to provide an update on that. Last Thursday, I was some, some interesting tidbits that came out of that meeting. I'll be meeting later this week with superintendent Jim Wagner and school board chair Bridget Tucker to talk about some school-related items. And the great meeting a couple of weeks ago with county administrator Joe Martin and county commissioner John King to discuss highway 169 pavement, which will come up later in the agenda as well. Really great opportunity for us to get on the same page around that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Appreciate your update. Moving on to the regular agenda, it takes us on to 8A, which is the Turkey Trot 2022 request. Summarize that for us, Mr. Roby.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Rotary Club is hosting its annual Turkey Trot Thanksgiving Day this year. In the past, the city has provided some in-kind donations, and as we've been doing this year, and trying to be consistent with, anytime the city is, it's a request from an organization for in-kind donations, we bring it forward to the council for review and approval. Typically, the way we handle this from a staff level is the request comes in, staff asking for some kind of assistance with a program or event. Staff will meet with the organizers of the event, look at what they're looking for, try to gauge what the involvement of the city would be, what we're legally allowed to provide, what we are capable of providing, and then summarize that. So we've got a couple of items on the consent agenda. Turkey Trot's the first one. So the Rotary Club will be running similar, running to what they've run in the past. They'd like a street sweeper to run cleanly a street for and after, if necessary. Clean up, anything, just to clean up the race route. The police officer and squad car to lead and then just be on hand for prevent safety, and then the fire department. Similarly, the fire department in the past is also, they put the truck out and put the flag up and looks very nice. And the community center, so the community center services have a hub for the event where the registration goes on that morning. Runners and walkers and pets check in at the community center. And typically, the community center staff will help set up the registration for the event. Provide space for that and tables and chairs and things like that. And so the club coordinates with Allison and Bob at the community center to get things going and stay there during the, during the event itself. And so the request tonight is motion to approve the request for the Rotary Club for the support requested for its event.
Mr. Roby just read our request. I know we have several Rotarians in this room right now, and this has been a great event in the past. So this time I'm going to take the motion to support the Turkey Trot for 2022. Thank you, Councilmember Swannberg and Councilmember Sullivan. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to Christmas in the Valley, 2022 request. Mr. Roby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in a moment, I'll ask Mr. Lord Edberg to come up and share, if I miss anything, or if you'd like to add anything else. Christmas in the Valley, so Christmas in the Valley event has taken place the last several years here downtown, the first Friday of December. And this year is scheduled for December 2nd, 2022. City has previously supported the event, considering donations of equipment and staff time. Mr. Edberg and I met first earlier this fall to discuss planning for the event. And the committee is requesting a few items for this year's event. Just given the number of people that we're going to be downtown, Chief Aaron Tiki would plan to staff a couple of extra police officers downtown in the area for the event itself. Public services staff, that's public works, and also water and wastewater staff. Moving some equipment in and out, there'll be a stage down there. And then the city also always expand the house, but we'll also be bringing in, dropping off some fire pits, some food carts and things like that. And then we'll also help stage the parade security, so that's barricades, some perimeter around the parade around and things like that. And the community is also requesting a waiver of the Main Street closure application fee, which $200 is what has been charged since Festival Street was established and open as part of the application to account for staff time that's committed to putting up barricades and signage and things like that. I would like, Mr. Edberg, if you'd like to come to the podium and add anything else.
Yes, council, thank you so much for allowing me to listen to Christmas in the Valley. You know, this was created for bringing our community together. This was a deal where we had started here approximately six years ago, where we came with a Christmas tree. It was an idea that Rotary and the city got together on, and we decided that, you know, we needed to have something that was a focus to this community that brought people together. And boy, did it work. We went and created a tree. This is Mother Louise Park. We put on 84,000 lights on it, which was the help of the city personnel again, and Rotary helped fund it. And that was a kickoff. All we had was a tree, and we had a lighting ceremony, and we had a number of people show up, but here's what the kicker was. During the week, that entire month, all you saw was cars coming up, stopping at the side of the street and just witnessing that tree. It was a time for focus. It was a time for evaluation, I suppose. I don't know. But my office happens to be sitting right on Main Street, and we made so many comments we couldn't believe. Matter of fact, the first year we counted over 130 cars a month that just stopped from up at the tree. And that's something special. And the best part about it is it didn't take it where it was a city tree. It didn't take it where it was a Rotary tree. It was our tree. And the thing is, is how that happened is there was an actual prayer service from a young man that passed away. Email went through that same year and said, we're going to have a prayer service at our tree. That's exactly what the entire purpose was. Nobody went and told people that. It just was assumed that that was our tree, and that's how it should have been. From that point on, we have tried to create something a little bit different every year to bring it in. So it's our event. It's not an event for the city. It's not an event for the Rotary or the school district. It's our event. With that being said, the entire event is not a moneymaker whatsoever. Matter of fact, it's 100% donated from a number of people. Right now, I got probably easily over 135 people that have been donating to this out of our city. City being one of them. Same kind contributions with City Help. Scott Schrader has been a miracle worker for me. He's done an extremely good job, and he's extremely excited about being a part of it. And that's exactly what the emotion, I think, is through the entire committee that helps put this thing out. They have an enthusiasm that wants to make it better. And the entire piece is, is what our entire goal was until I, for this, was bring people to this city, make people want to be a part of this city, make people want to live in the city, and make people want to work in the city. Because if they're living and working and playing and going to school in the city, they're buying in this city. Higher point. That's exactly what all this thing is meant to be. 100% of the money is all donated from businesses, from people like yourselves, from different areas. We have the school involved. We have the whole school district. Jim Wagner is totally on board with bringing this thing together. Why? Is because we see the need for the school district and businesses to be meshing together. We haven't had it in years, and everyone of you can understand that. What we're trying to do is make a difference in this town, and it's working, people. It is a fantastic piece. We are starting to see these communities working together, trying to pull this thing all to one issue, and that's trying to pull everyone together. What's happening this year? We're doing building food carts this year because we have vendors out there that are combining together. We've got three or four businesses that are going to put on one food cart that's going to give away cookies, going to give away hot chocolate, it's going to give away taco in the bay, it's going to give away meatballs, it's going to give away mac and cheese. I mean, all these different things, all free to anyone that comes down there, and we're hoping for around 1,000 people. Last year, we were expecting 500. Huh. You know what we had? 2,100 or over. We were losing count as we were going. That is amazing. We ran out of food extremely early. Okay? That wasn't bad. That means that there was fantastic participation, that people wanted to see something together and make it work. So with that being said, this year we tried to bump that up. Why did we have three or four people? Because it is a hard thing for one person to handle one cart and give away that much food. And so we combined a number of people. And so this year we decided to actually have a cart. Went to the school. I asked them, hey, would you guys be interested? Absolutely. So I got the shop in the middle class to donate all the labor because they're teaching their kids how to build this cart, oh, by the way, for our city. That brings them back to our city because now they got ownership. That brings them back to our city because now they got ownership back into the city again. And so they built it. I had all the materials uh donated from all our local places around here. So that's one thing that started, next thing that started was this mural that we wanted to do something different with. Because on Rob Mocker's wall, it was pretty blah and it's kind of dark in that area. And so last year as we were looking, we decided that we wanted to create this mural and put it on there. The mural has been completely painted, all it has to be done now is be put up, which we're trying to do this week. And so we're gonna need a a little assistance on some of those types of pieces. But the entire thing was totally one hundred percent picked up. There's no cost to knowing. With that being said, as we go on, I need the city council to always keep a very open mind about this particular thing. The reason is, is we're bringing in corporations, we're bringing in mom and pop shops, we're bringing in city residents, we're bringing in the city of those sort. And we're bringing in the school district of those sort, all in agreement and they're all working together. And that's what we're looking for. And it's working, people. Any questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Edberg. No, I don't have any questions. Anybody else? I just want you to know that uh we we appreciate your enthusiasm and and everything you've done and and that uh really been able to pull this together. It's it's been a big success and it's it's doing nothing but brewing. And thank you.
My name is Lawrence. The city council is up to date. Talk about the parade routes so all of us are involved. Please, people will will know what's happening.
In the years past, we we at the very first year, we're talking about ten years ago, we started way down the far end of town. We worked our way this way. We went uh to um the uh S A station, we went around the Pizza Ranch, went around the Mall of Ameri- oh, America, the mall. And then down through past Wises and then down Main Street again on South Main. And then last year, for the first time, we decided to change it and we actually started on the south side of Main Street. We went through Festival Street because that was the very first time we could put something out on that street. What an exciting time. You know, we actually had so many people wanting to be a part of that street because they've been working on it for two years. We ran the parade right down and a big success. We ran it past our Christmas tree, went around the post office and it was pretty much completed at that point. This year, we had a little uh fruit basket upset. It was still gonna be planned that way, but what we decided and what has happened is um for safety reasons. We decided that we need to change this. Uh biggest reason is Bridge Street is a problem area. We can't control two thousand people going across that street at one time. And with that being said, they will now allow us to shut it down. Uh at the state of Minnesota and the state of Minnesota made a request that we would reroute that parade route. Which we did. We sat down with uh Mr. Robbie, we sat down with all the city personnel and we had what, four or five talks about this at different meetings. And we, uh my committee uh accepted it, uh that we were gonna change it, we're gonna start it at Rize Dorf and Second Street. Is where we're gonna line up. We're gonna go down Rize Dorf to South Main. We're gonna get on South Main, we're gonna come north to Ferry Street, which is the corner of Wise Furniture and the Green Mill. We're gonna turn and not go down Festival Street. We're gonna turn and go east and we're gonna go right over to Second Street. Again, right past Wise Furniture, take it to Second Street and then go all the way down to walk Rize Dorf. Uh so we got set up and take down all in the same area. We can shut down each one of those streets on top of the hill and on the bottom of the hill. Um biggest reason again, this all started last year, if you recall. One week prior to us putting on the parade, Chicago had a major issue, about seven people died when somebody drove through the parade route. Myself and Scott Trader at that particular time made a decision quick that we're gonna put emergency vehicles in those spots because of that one incident. And now it's a state requirement that you have to block down the streets with emergency vehicles on parade type units because of that type of deal. So we felt pretty good that we were on top of that already a year ago. Now we are a lot safer, nobody can really break in. And uh we feel like it's gonna be a nicer area now. As luck would have it, we'd love to be down past our tree again, but that doesn't mean we're gonna discourage that line. What we're gonna do is we're gonna actually have some assisted areas where we can walk, where people can walk and still witness that tree. We're still gonna have a lighting uh time where we're gonna push down and I'm hoping my Mr. Mayor is gonna be a part of that. Uh so I haven't asked you yet, but uh we're putting that out.
Yeah, I may have something going on maybe.
And so uh with that being said, we're still gonna have a lighting uh time where everyone can see it and it's gonna be a full game. But thank you for showing that or talking about that parade difference. Uh so that's what we're gonna try to issue.
Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, motions before you to approve the request one and two for writing city supporters outline and also considering approval of request three, waiving the Main Street closure fee. Mr. Robbie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ray. Um I just I do wanna call attention to to the motion here and so the motion is for um items one and two, I mean consideration of three. Um if.
So do we wanna vote on the first motion first, one and two?
And the the reason I I'd explain, yeah, I I would like to explain why. So I pulled up to I do three, the waiver of the fee. Um so the uh as I mentioned earlier, the two hundred dollar fee that's associated with the application for closing down Festival Street, that's the one hundred block of South Main. We have, the city has to to this point um. Charge that to any entity that has wished to close down Main Street. We even charged our own fire department to do one of the firefighters, had the firefighter funds. Um they asked, do you think we'll be able to waive it? And I said, I can ask council, but um and we've had some comments before. We've had, I've had personally feedback from individuals who would like the city to overall eliminate that altogether. Because they believe it discourages the the closure of the street at at the other side. People suggest that should be increased, um given the. The fact that it it takes city resources to close it and it's seen inconvenience to the community. And so I did wanna pull that out here because to date, the city has not entertained any waiver of that fee. Um if the council chooses to do so, it may, um but I wanna call it out separately here. I just want it to have been provided in the past as an in-kind donation from the city to support this event, which is why I put those in in the first motion.
Thank you. Well, let's start with the the first motion, uh to approve request one and two, providing city supporters outline. Do we have in a uh motion? So move. Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg.
Second.
Councilmember Sullivan, thank you. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. And then the uh second item to consider approving request number three, waiving the Main Street closure fee of two hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
Also move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Crooman. I'll second, seconded by Councilmember Huntington. Uh any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
I have a question. You're getting a little ahead of yourself. What determines when we're gonna waive this? I don't agree with waiving a fee for one group and not for another.
Well, the considerations for this have been tonight, taking a case.
I am not in favor of waiving it for anyone unless we do it for everyone.
Yeah, that was my question. If we waived it in the past, um and we haven't. You're you're setting up precedence here that every volunteer organization is gonna ask for you to waive it. And uh be prepared for that.
Somebody else? My microphone's not working.
Let let me comment on that. I mean, number one is to think. I I also consider, I have that same concern. However, I think it's time to revisit the whole thing. But we gotta move on this one because we're going up to December second, I believe is the date. On the other hand, this is for the entire city. It's it's a a large event for everybody. Other groups are coming in having limited reasons for what they're doing. They're, for example, raising money for a particular cause, which is not wrong, that's wonderful. Or even the fire department is raising for the fire department, which in a way benefits the whole city. But I see this as something that benefits our entire community in this regard. Secondly, we can control this in the future by not worrying about waiting, by getting rid of the fee, but having to approve the request. I think, maybe I'm not thinking correctly there. But that ultimately, I think we have to have some control over whether this, whether the street's closed. Not everybody should be able to do this. If we waive the fee and we decide if we're gonna close the street. We have the ability not to close the street, is what I'm trying to say. Some small group wants to do it, we don't feel that's appropriate, we don't have to do it. We have the discretion to close that street and waive the fee at the same time.
I think if the city is going to lend its name to be a partner in this, we should waive it. If the city is not going to do that, I'm with you, it it it's gonna look really bad.
Joe, I I got a quick question in regards to, so we also shut down Streets during Giant Days. I know it's a separate organization, but do we charge them a fee to shut down, what is it?
Like.
Are, I ain't gonna go behind.
South Park.
So do we charge them the same fee that we charge at Main Street?
Um we have not charged a fee personally down South Park Lane.
So I mean essentially, essentially what I'm getting at is I think we've set a precedence there as well. Because we provided that and I I guess my question is, why wasn't this part of the initial request of in-kind donations? And and I think, I'm assuming it was under Mr. Edberg's terms, but then we as a city have taken that as a separate request.
Correct. So um the. To address the South Park Lane question, part of the, a- as I understand, part of the establishment of the fee for South Main Street in particulars. That South Main Street has built into it some amenities that South Park Lane doesn't have. So South, South Main, one hundred block of South Main has access to lots of electricity. In particular, a- effectively free electrical use, right? So you can plug whatever you want into those, into the pads and use it as part, so as part of trying to recoup some of that expense. That South Park Lane does not have. For example, there would be a fee associated with it.
But then we should be charging a user fee versus a closing the road down fee because if it's closing the road down fee. As you described, putting barricades up, providing the staff to do that, we should be doing that for any street that is shut down. In my opinion. But to me, that's treaty, I I understand, it's got amenities that other streets don't have. Then it's gotta be named what what we're charging for. And that isn't the way it was described to me or the way I understand the policy.
So if I have a, okay, for one thing, the Main Street was so called renovated, so I can understand what a different fee than versus park. And um there's all lots of history in the past for the Giant Day celebration. That park is automatically so-called grandfathered in. Main Street being renovated gives you opportunity to rethink that process. So I I can understand that perspective. Um the concern that I have. That a lot of the time the volunteer organizations, they don't always appreciate and just expect the handout um from the city. Um but don't always appreciate that the in-kind does involve a lot of staff and a lot of parts on the city. So this is one way to acknowledge that, acknowledge that stuff. That's a part that um I find a little frustrating sometimes with volunteer organizations. They don't always appreciate. Um the effort that city puts in and it's so easy to. And just from what I've heard in the past, it's why I'm the city, instead of say, hey, I didn't do this, I didn't do that. But they did do this and they did do that, you know, it's just, that's what gets a little frustrating when you have to spell it all out like this, it's it's too bad. So I just get concerned that you're gonna get negative feedback from all the other ones who maybe have had the same kind of request, but didn't get the opportunity to request waiver. Of the fee. And if there's some criteria that would allow us to make that judgment, that you have the opportunity. When you make this request, because you're a blah, 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 um you will qualify for a waiver opportunity. But that's really getting detailed.
Is this the first request that we've had to waive the fee?
Um.
I thought the Giant Days.
Formally, yes. So Giant Days did not request to waive the fee. The firefighter fund, the firemen's fund separate from the city, right? This is the fund, um the Relief Association um asked if it did, we thought it would be a possibility. Um and suggested they could come to council and ask, but likely wouldn't be because in the past it's been charged to every benefit, every. Every event that's been held on South Main so far, I would classify as being some form of benefit, either private benefit or public benefit for a not-for-profit um function. Um and so the Fire Relief Association just. Cut a check. So I think it's, uh again, the thought. Is it's it's a venue, it's a rental of a venue in the same way that we rent out Legion Park Shelter or. Um and so it's it's not necessarily even the barricading of South Main Street, it's 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 the use of the street as a venue for an event.
And I don't disagree with that, but I believe the policy is written, the way it's described in the policy, it's written to shut the road down. And that's what I struggle with and that's why I'm saying, I think the question needs to be asked. I don't disagree with anything that's been said here tonight. But the way the the document's written, I believe it describes shutting the road down. I don't think it covers.
As opposed to a usual.
A rental fee or a user fee or a electric fee year.
Sure.
And I think that's where we're we have issues. And that's why we're having the conversation tonight. I think the policy needs to change.
For the sake of keeping or maybe moving along, uh let's uh consider and and we'll take a vote on it right now. Approval request number three, waiving the Main Street closure fee.
Mr. Mayor, can I just?
One quick comment, please.
Biggest comment of the lot is, we, the entire thing started six years ago. It was the Rotary Group and the city combined together. And we created this this complete Christmas in the Valley together. Was the group. And that means the entire city was involved with this, not just the city itself. We're talking about the entire community of those sort. And that's why I think with this being a waived deal, it really isn't that big of a deal. I think that you're not receiving money because it's, we're charging our own people yet. This is our own thing. Sorry.
No, thank you, Lauren. Um if there, if there's nothing else that anybody needs to add at this moment, I will entertain any motions. Is there a motion to waive it?
You've already got it.
We did, by the way. By him. Second. New second. It's been a motion by Councilmember Crooman, seconded by Councilmember Huntington. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Hi.
Two nays and four ayes, I believe.
I'm on my side. Can I do that?
One, yes, obviously, yes.
Good thing.
So it was uh Councilmember. Swanberg and Schlitter, nay. Councilmember Williams, abstain. And then, yes, Crooman, Kirby.
And myself.
And so on, solid, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for that uh party discussions, council members. Moving on to um I am E C, Special Assessment Policy Update. Uh Mr. Robbie, you wanna review this for us, please?
Yes, this is less riveting than anything. The city maintains a policy for special assessments. Uh the policy the city had in place up until about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen was rather extensive. And covered um situation in which the city would assess property owners when work is being done. Um to build new or improve existing uh municipal infrastructure, um mainly roads, curves, things like that. Um the policy was revamped in uh the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen uh time period to. Uh really focus on the benefit appraisal. So prior to that period, during the nineties and early two thousands, the city did not specifically use the benefit appraisal. Uh to determine what the benefits to property owners would be uh when the project is complete. When that policy was adopted uh four or five years ago, did not include any language around deferring the assessments. Um and uh it would be, it's somewhat standard practice in 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 terms of assessments to. Uh for a city to allow for certain deferments of assessments, uh principally in two cases. Um one would be in 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 case of hardship. So in the original, back to nineteen ninety one. Um Special Assessment Policy, the city. um, special assessment policy, the city allowed hardship deferment, which is deferment to the assessment, not deferment of interest, but deferment of assessment, um, in case of age, um, or disability. There was an application associated with that, so the individual along, uh, was going to be assessed, would um, go on an application, state the reason for hardship, and the city could then approve or deny those applications. Um, that language went away in the last policy, um, we're proposing to bring it back here. Secondly, it's for, um, subdivisible lots, so if a property could in theory or in practice, I guess, be subdivided, um, their lot typically has a large, there's an assessment placed on the main lot where it could be the home, yes, where the principal business is. And then, um, the extension of that lot could technically be subdivided at some point and sold off and built on, right? Um, that secondary portion of the lot, which would be considered subdivitable, has its own assessment um, to it, it's typically a smaller assessment. Um, that component of the assessment could be deferred, again, with interest, so interest can continue to accrue. And at some point in the future, if the property owner decided to subdivide that lot, sell it off, build something else on it, um, then the assessment would, uh, be payable. Um, this was used, um, in the Kasaf thirty-six project we have uh, at the November twenty eighth council meeting, there will be three applications, three proposed deferred assessments for subdivitable lots, there are three lots along Kasaf thirty-six, um, project that are, the lots are large enough that a portion of them could be subdivided at some point in the future, those assessments again are smaller, most of our residential property assessments are seventy-five hundred dollars. The subdivible lot portion is an additional, I believe, thirty-two fifty, thirty-three hundred dollars. And so, um, those proposed deferments would be just for the subdivitable portion, and interest would continue to accrue on them. And so we're proposing at this point is not to approve those deferments, those will be on the November twenty eighth meeting, this would simply be to update the policy to include the language on, um, deferred assessments for subdivitable lots or for hardship. Language very similar to the original policy the city had, we're just bringing it back into the current laws.
Mayor, very, Mr. Sullivan.
Joe, is there a, like a time, a term on that, then, that they can be deferred? Cause, you know, obviously if somebody sits on it for ten years and doesn't settle it, I mean, the city's essentially just paying for that.
There is, yes, uh, one moment here, I'll pull up the specific language. So for a, and it's a little bit different for hardships versus, um, uh, subdivided lots.
I'm more looking at the subdivitable.
Sure, so, um, it would be deferred until the earlier of thirty years from the date of assessment. Where until the lot split occurs, creating second buildable lot, if that's split occurs before thirty years, uh, the deferred assessment would be an active assessment, doing equal installments or um, the same number as the original assessment or time period, not exceeding thirty years sometimes, so thank you.
Just to be clear, uh, Joe, if that's subdivible lot, if that property is sold, then then that is paid on assessment. So let's, let's say it's deferred, that's subdivible lot. And down the road, that property is sold. Just the interest is paid on that, or is it, um, interest and?
It's the whole, so the interest begins to accrue at the point that the assessments are certified. And then, so it's not just the interest, it would be principal and interest.
But the, but the subdivible lots is assessed, let's say it's seventy-five hundred or five, or thirty-five hundred dollars. That lot is sold five years later, then it's not collected, just the interest is.
I know, but the, the entire assessment would be good, okay, very good.
I just wanted to be clear.
Essentially, we're just saying, if you ever, right now, you're not using that second lot for anything. If you ever do, then you'll have to pay.
If not producing any kind of thing like that, so, yeah, I understand. Any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the recommended updates to the city's special assessment policy. So I'll say, Mr. Sullivan, second by Councilmember Swanberg, any comments, concerns, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have. Moving on to our twenty twenty-two dash zero four six certification delinquent utility accounts, this will be, I'm gonna review this first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so council has received, uh, preliminary uh, preliminary delinquency utility assessment list back in, uh, early September. Um, this is the culmination of this process, so just a refresher. Um, every year, any account that's delinquent by any amount at the end of August, uh, is placed on a list. Um, letters are sent to the property owners, um, of those utility accounts, the account holders um, in early September, um, that list this year was a little over four hundred and forty thousand dollars in total, uh, to only for utilities. Um, council then had a, held a public hearing, as it's obliged to do on October tenth. Um, if they wish to dispute their presence on the list or ask for forgiveness, things like that. No one, uh, was present at the public hearing other than council itself. And no comments were, were heard or provided at the hearing. Um, following the, when those letters are sent out, from an operational standpoint, then, um, staff will typically get phone calls, um, or emails from property owners, anyone who's on that list who gets a letter. And then, the goal is, staff's goal is to whittle that list down as much as possible between early September and today. We, the city offers, um, payment, the ability to, um, do payment plans, uh, if someone's on a payment plan, they can avoid being on this list, um, if someone's on a payment plan, they also don't pay any late fees. And so the list is now gone down to, um, the lower two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, which if certified tonight would be assessed to La Sura County for collection, planning for a few property taxes. Uh, this is consistent with the process that we utilized in the past. Um, the amounts are higher this year, uh, the principal driver of the higher amount, uh, this year versus last year is the addition of the late fees, which were, um, grouped in a limited early twenty twenty-two. If you rate, if you run up a balance of four or five thousand dollars, um, by the time you hit this point, your late fees alone are can be seven hundred dollars a month. So the request tonight is a motion to approve this, um, on its approval. Um, finance certificate draft will be in communication with the county, will send this list, which is attached to the packet. The county doesn't care about specific addresses, they care about the parcel ID or the BID number, um, they'll add those into twenty twenty-two property taxes, unlike assessments, which are collected over a series of years, each only the utilities are typically collected in the following year.
Thank you, any questions from Mr. Lundy at all? That's a considerable amount you've collected since September, it's over two thousand, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. So the motion in front of us is to approve resolution R twenty twenty-two dash zero four six, or find two thousand twenty-two delinquent utility accounts totaling two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and one dollars and sixty-nine cents to the La Sura County for collections in two thousand twenty-three taxes. Anybody? Motion? So moved, and a motion made by Councilmember Crowman, second, seconded by Councilmember Sullivan. Um, any other comments, concerns, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have.
Can I just ask a quick question? How good are you at getting that much money back?
Very, the, the final amount, very good.
Oh, that's great.
It's probably in, I would say, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent collection rate, because it included in property taxes, um, effectively people have to pay it, um, if they don't, then they go to tax forfeiture, tax forfeiture process. Um, we do receive phone calls from, um, banks, uh, for people who ask growth. Last year, they made a call, I'm just saying, I want to pay this before it goes to property taxes, because I don't want to have to charge their escrow insurance. So the bank will actually pay it, um, but the question right here is, actually, almost hundred percent.
I didn't know how you really get it, do you, to revenue recapture or?
Yes, so, um, this is not the process the city has always used, in the past, um, the city utilized, um, revenue capture and collection agency. And so you use that for not only delinquent utilities, but also delinquent ambulance fillings at the time. Um, we do still have some accounts, um, just a couple late hole bombs, um, or ambulance fillings, um, so the city then moved away from that, was able to utilize property tax assessments. Um, this is also a way that, in the past, council had opted to not do utility shut offs. Knowing that we can ultimately get the money that's owed to the city while avoiding, um, shut offs.
Plus it makes the county look worse than us. So we've had a, a vote on that, we'll move on to, uh, the, the next item, it's R twenty twenty-two dash zero four seven, highway one sixty-nine abatement program. Mr. Roby, you want to explain that to us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. So, um, as discussed at our budget work session, um, last month, and, uh, in, in terms of previous council, much discussions, um, the city entered into, uh, property tax abatement program back in two thousand and six, with property tax abatement programs. Um, any other taxing, um, or levy jurisdiction within the service area can choose to participate or choose not to participate. So the city, uh, city council passed a resolution, uh, setting up a twenty-year abatement program. The Sur County opted in to this abatement program, the school district opted out, which is not uncommon, the school district is trying to find every nickel, can under every couch cushion, so they um, I was not participating with this, which is fine. Uh, but the city council, um, and, uh, the Sur County Board of Commissioners, uh, respective resolutions establishing this program, which will last twenty years. Um, during those, that twenty-year period of time, uh, the county, by resolution, would take property taxes from three specific parcels within the city of La Sura, and send those each year to the city, city would then put those funds, uh, in a separate fund uh, to be used for, um, uh, projects in the highway one sixty-nine hilltop corridor. The city's resolution, uh, set much the same, uh, some different language, where it takes property tax dollars from these three parcels and put them into this, this fund, uh, to be used for development in that same area. This is now kind of a long-storted tale, um, in twenty twenty, the city staff realized that the city was, while the county had been fulfilling its obligations and sending, sending, uh, property tax dollars, um, to the city each year since twenty, uh, two thousand and seven. The city had not been waiting aside, um, for the dollars, um, that it was, um, supposed to, according to its original resolution. Um, and so, starting with the twenty twenty-one levy, and continuing with this year's twenty-two levy, uh, the city began to try to catch up, um, with its contributions to the fund. I met two weeks ago with, uh, as I mentioned earlier, with, um, Commissioner Key and Administrator Martin Obrick, we had a great conversation uh, about this program, the history of it, where it goes from here, and a couple of things came out of that. Uh, the first was a joint powers agreement, um, the city and county were to establish a joint powers agreement. In theory, I believe, to determine how the funds would be used, where they would be used in the timing of expenditures. As mentioned at the work session, that kind of powers agreement was not established, uh, or assigned. Um, and so, uh, we do have, um, an agreement circulating now between the city and county, we've really narrowed down the language, I think it's really robust. It's gonna cover everything that I believe the city should, um, county feels much the same way. Um, the legal is reviewing it now, um, county's having their legal review it, and my plan is to bring it back for council approval on November twenty-eighth, meaning, the county board of commissioners will also consider the same agreement, um, after city council, um, approves the agreement. The second thing that came out of it was the reality of the, the, the fiscal inch that the city feels by overcompens, overfunding this fund at this point, trying to play catch up by the time the abatement ends in twenty twenty-six. Um, statutorily, the abatement has to end at the end of twenty twenty-six, twenty years is the absolute max of this abatement program. However, um, the general, uh, agreements and understanding, um, that, um, that came out of the meeting that I had with, with the county, was that, um, the city is, um, not obligated via resolution, I'm becoming a city resolution to complete its contributions by the end of twenty twenty-six. It would be in the city's best interest, from a partnership standpoint, that it meet its obligations. But if the city were to, instead of trying to catch up by the end of twenty-six, extend that timeline and make its contributions all by a later date, that, that would, that would be acceptable. And, uh, so Finance Director Grant and I run the numbers, um, and what I'm proposing tonight is, uh, resolution R twenty twenty-two dash zero four seven, which would, um, effectively acknowledge that the abatement program itself is going to end at the end of twenty twenty-six, but that we as a city would continue to levy dollars as part of our general levy, to put money into this fund. Now, the city's allowed to levy these dollars, um, it just, they would be specifically put into this fund, so that by the end of twenty thirty, we will have contributed everything we needed to, the county will continue to contribute through twenty twenty-six. And I expect it will be done, contributing in twenty twenty-six, we would just continue to fund it from a city standpoint through twenty thirty. This gets us a little bit longer runway, uh, which decreases the burden on the overall tax levying, being now in twenty thirty. I'll take any questions.
Um, I appreciate your work in negotiating with the, the county, Joe, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, very challenging to, to, um, trying to meet the needs of everybody with this levy, I, I know the expectations of some of our council people thought that the personal budget was quite high. You've worked hard to whittle that down, I know you've been working very hard at it, and this is a very big piece of that puzzle. So, um, with that, I'll open this up, do any other comments, if anybody has any?
I have a question. Joe, we have the joint towers agreement, which, let's go there first, that will also clarify what the money can be used for?
Correct.
In the abatement fund right now, that was a little murky, we'll put it that.
Yes.
At least not from our standpoint, but whatever. Secondly, is there another resolution that the county will need to pass for this to happen in some way?
It will not.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Roby, here.
Oh, I have one more.
Yep.
Um, so I, I specifically did not put any numbers on this chart. A- as far as how much the city will contribute between now and twenty thirty, because of course that could in theory be a moving target. My proposal, I didn't need it, um, I didn't want to ask for it to be approved tonight. My proposal would be to keep things as consistent as possible. Um, in theory, what this would mean is that the city could contribute nothing, and then try to catch up on one year, which I hope the city council doesn't do, and that would go against our recommendation staff. But, um, you know, we, we, frankly, I brought a couple of different models, uh, where we just taper it down slowly over time till we're caught up at the end of twenty thirty, or we try to backload it, um, and Ryan is actually, today was running some new models where we try to, um, tie our contributions to what the, the rest of the general funds, um, that service looks like. So we'll have some debt falling off after twenty twenty-six, and so we could, they ramp up our contributions to the levy as our other debt is falling off, to keep our levy consistent, which from a state standpoint and citizen standpoint is, is a healthy way to do it. So we're not having large swings, um, in our, in our levy year to year. Right now, the current model that I have shows us, um, right now, twenty twenty-two, uh, we're levying one hundred eighty-five Right now, the current model that I have shows us, right now, twenty twenty two, we're levying one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to the abatement fund. As of right now, the model shows us a hundred and twenty thousand dollar contribution for twenty twenty three, keeping that through twenty twenty six, and then decreasing it a little bit in twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty. But again, Ryan is rerunning some models to see what it might look like if he lined it up with our debt that's falling off. My, my goal, my recommendation will be to at least fund it to the level at which the property taxes are coming in for those three parcels, so that we don't continue to dig ourselves into a hole, that we're at least building ourselves up. Or at least contributing what the property taxes are for those parcels in the next forty years, and then the remaining years of the extension to which cleaning things up.
I'm assuming that the agreement you came to would allow you to pay this off before twenty thirty, but that is the maximum.
Correct. And in theory.
I think it's wise that you didn't put all our mouths in there. I think it was.
Yeah, we're not committing ourselves to anything if we decide, if council decides, not we, council decides to pay off early. Yep, that's perfectly acceptable. And twenty thirty is in theory, an arbitrary number.
You could extend it.
We, we could extend it. If the council chooses tonight, we can modify the resolution and come back with another resolution or accept it as is, but change it to twenty thirty one or twenty thirty two, or maybe twenty eight, twenty nine. Twenty thirty was a nice round year, which also allows us some, a little bit of cushion, a little bit, but not too much. And ultimately, it allows the county to acknowledge and be gracious enough to allow us to, to build it back to what it should be without extending it into the longer future. And the joint powers agreement on that note, from a tiny standpoint, the joint powers agreement, the language in there will specifically state the time period during which the funds shall be spent and at what point the fund, by what point the funds should be spent.
If I may, Joe, just, we, I think we need to be real careful with how much of the original resolution still has effect. There was talk about making an entire payment, which we won't do, but to pay it all off. And there is a limitation in paragraph five of two hundred thousand per year.
That's correct. So yes, so the, the original resolution itself, and in fact, this is statutory language, we cannot, and this is part of our challenge in making it up by twenty twenty six, we can't statutorily exceed ten percent levy or two hundred thousand dollars per year. So if we were to pay it off early, we'd have to do so in twenty twenty seven or, or maybe. Good point.
Not that others will remember that five years from now, but you never know. But Joe will be here to do it.
Joe, I have the council.
Mr. Roby, is there any action needed tonight? Are you going to bring this back at the twentieth meeting for approval?
The extra request tonight is approval of this resolution, which would, it, it doesn't modify the original resolution itself. What it does is it's, it declares the council's intent to pay off its, its obligation by the end of twenty thirty. I give acknowledgement of the abatement itself is ending, but committing the city to continuing to pay.
So. The resolution, R twenty twenty two dash zero four seven, it's been motions made by Councilmember Sullivan. It's been seconded by Councilmember Schlier. Any other comments, concerns? Not all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have. Moving on to our last item today, the canvassing of two thousand twenty two election results. Mr. Roby, you want to explain this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just this morning, we received the formal election results from Lusur County, which are included in the edition that was handed out just before the meeting tonight. So according to state statute, the city, as it is, city of Lusur forms the obligations of, of, of the governing body of this election for our precincts. And the city also therefore serves as the canvassing board for this election. The results of the election must be canvassed every third and the tenth day following the election. In some years, it has the council's had a special, like, special meeting. If you happen to have a meeting tonight, which falls between that window, results from the county would not be changed or modified in any way, but it is asked of the council for standard operating procedure, formally canvassed and accept the results of the city council election held last Tuesday, February eighth.
If you, council members, you were given the tally sheet of how the election results tallied up last week. This time I'll undertake the motions to canvass and declare the results of the two thousand twenty two city council election held on Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand. So moved. Thank you. Councilmember Huntington, Councilmember Williams, seconded. All those, any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, we are expected to sign this for the canvassing board, correct?
Correct. So I will circulate, uh, sign that.
And I'm expected to go over to the county to certify. So. At this time, we'll move on to comments, reports, and items of appreciation. As always, we will start with Mr. Huntington.
I have nothing, actually.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Krogman.
Let's talk briefly about the planning commission. I'd like to say there's good news and bad news, but it's all bad news in a way. Okay? There is some good news. The good news is that Justin Nielsen has assumed his new role as the staff person for planning commission, and he's going to be doing an exceptional job. You could tell just from the meeting that we had, which was not an official meeting, here's the bad news. We have seven members on that commission, only two showed up. And also there, this year without a vote, so there are three of us, but one of us didn't have a vote, so we did not have a quorum. We did spend time, however, simply processing what was happening. And I think you're going, I think you are going to see a recommendation coming to you, not officially from the planning commission, because we didn't have a quorum, but from Justin and staff and from those who were able to participate, recommending that we, we change our ordinance to have a five member commission, which lowers the quorum number. But also to have one of those five members be the council member who is assigned to the planning commission, which means you need four at-large citizens and one council member instead of seven plus one. And you have what went up with five. That has not yet been developed. That is in the process of being looked at. But I expect that you will see something to that effect soon. To me, it's very distressing that we can't find seven people and get a quorum out of that number to be able to hold a planning commission. This is not the first time that has happened this year, but it's going to become absolutely critical when we begin with some new things that must be decided or rather recommended by the planning commission, one of which is the new school building, which should be coming to us early next year sometime. So this needs to be resolved very quickly. But again, thanks to Justin, he did an exceptional job of helping the group process what was happening, understanding what was happening, and advising us on what's coming in the future. The other thing is that planning commission is definitely going to be meeting on a regular basis. They look at their, at their requirements and city code, and they want it to be that they are supposed to meet every month. These are the people who are there, the non-quorum participants, so that we are continually to move forward and do things and train and indoctrinate people. Our planning commission is just understanding what it does legally, what is required of the quarter. Anyway, so I'm a little bit on a rant raid there, I realize, but it is really upsetting when we have that kind of result. And if we know of any people in the community who are willing to serve on that planning commission, let's try to encourage them to put their name forward so this council can appoint people, appoint the right people. I'm not saying we haven't appointed the right people to pass, but just let's make sure we're getting people that really care about our community and about the planning process. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Schlier.
A few things. I'm going to expand on what Councilmember Krogman said on the planning commission. I think it's also part of our responsibility as a council and city staff to recruit, to make sure that we have our commissions still. I think we've been negligent on that. It's also our responsibility to remove members from the commissions if we are fulfilling their obligations, if they're not showing up. It's something we need to consider looking at more closely going forward. I did have a Lusur County officials meeting, and we set it on the twenty sixth. That was the last meeting of the year. I did brief Administrator Roby on conversations that we had at that meeting. Trick or treat on Main was a huge success, almost too huge. I did hear complaints from people that we need to consider traffic control going forward if we're going to have that many kids that are crossing that street. And I do have an H R A meeting coming up before next week.
If I can just, I'll go quickly on the, the traffic concerns. Chief Keegan and I had a conversation about that, and, and we'll be addressing that for trick or treating for, specifically around Bridge Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Sullivan.
I'll have the report tonight.
Councilmember Swamber.
Yeah, just some thank yous. I know Joe touched on it, but thank you to our election judges. Congratulations to all the candidates who were victorious in their elections and a very sincere thank you to anyone who was willing to run. And also thank you to the businesses who also did the trick or treat on Main. I heard the same thing. It was a huge success.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
The only thing I want to know is thanks to the community center and the group up there who acknowledged Marion Peck and her birthday for being a hundred years old today. It's very nice that they acknowledged her.
Marion's a hundred?
Hundred.
Wow.
And she still goes to Silver Sneakers, so good for her.
It all comes out with the veterans, too. Good for us. I got just a couple of quick things. First of all, the elections. Councilmember Krogman, I was disappointed to hear you will not be going, will be, I have a listen at two thousand twenty three city council. I am on the other side of the quorum, looking forward to working with Councilmember Electui. I'm sure he has the best interests of the city in mind, like we all do. You've been a very big resource to this council. I appreciate everything you've done for this council. And along the lines of what you were talking about earlier, I know you're going to be around in the future to kind of help us out with some of the commission things we have going on. Because you've been a very, very big part of this council. I want to thank you for that. Lastly, we have a young gentleman here with the Boy Scouts, and he's taking notes. You're working on American, should I? What merit are we working on? Citizenship?
Yeah, no, no. Communications.
Communications. Very good. And what's your name?
Ben Harnashen.
Ben, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We enjoy having you here.
Thank you.
So, okay, thank you. With that, I don't have anything else to add. Mr. Roby, you had your opportunity. It's been a long night, so unless you want to close with something real important.
I've had many opportunities, I think, and probably too many.
With that, I want to change motion to close this meeting. So moved. Thank you. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Good night, everyone.